Welcome everyone to the Welcome everyone to the September 14 noon meeting of the Village of Lansing staff and Board of Trustees. We also have our Bern Blozzy with us today to talk about our deer management program. Bern, the first thing that we need to do is we've got to, we've got to go kind of around the table with the staff because John Courtney has an emergency he's got to get to if you don't mind. So, John?
Yeah, real quick sewer projects coming along.
Oh, hang on, I've got to do a roll call.
Alright.
Susan Ainsley?
Present.
Wolfgang Boden?
Yep.
Carolyn Greymo?
Here.
Tru Reel?
Here.
And Ronnie Hardaway is here. Thanks, Mike. Go ahead, John.
The sewer project's going along pretty, pretty good. I'm not sure about our completion date for October. The rock has been a real big issue there and it's continuing to be an issue. They have completed seven borings up at, on East Shore Drive.
Seven out of?
Seven out of 20.
Okay.
Yeah, it's about one day per boring is what they're averaging right now. They patched the blacktop back in where they dug it up in the road from Autumn Ridge down to East Shore Drive. They still have a little bit more to do once we do the gravity tie-ins for Bolton Point and Autumn Ridge. And then we're thinking, we're somehow trying to get them to complete Oak Crest south to Cedar Lane so we can get that much of it paved back up and then progress north of Oak Crest as it goes along.
What's the completion date for that?
I mean, it was substantially completed for the donation was slated for October, but you mean paving?
There's that project, that little area.
Yeah, we're hoping to go somewhere around the second week of October, so still a month away.
A month away.
Because they have to do all the borings for the pressure lines on the west side of the road.
Every time I drive home, I'm about to turn Oak Crest, see the sign, go whoops, and turn around, forgetting every time that it's.
It's not good and I feel bad for the people and they should all get accommodation of some sort for putting up with the mess and the noise and they've done really good though. The contractor, I couldn't be more pleased with them as far as, I mean, it's destruction before construction for sure. But things are going good there and we're pushing them along pretty good. We're trying to get them, at least to get a couple more crews in. They're starting seeding and mulching, tree plantings, driveway repairs on East Shore Drive. But I have a schedule that I'll share to you. I kind of want to take it down to a less complicated way for you to pass around to people.
5,000 foot level or something?
Yeah, I mean, giving stations is not really beneficial to the general public.
Right.
It's more of an engineering thing.
Yeah, bring it down to a point where we can put it up under the Q and A and make it a link so people look at it.
Yep.
I don't know, that might open a lot of questions, just once we see it, we'll know.
Yeah, yeah, maybe I'll work with you and see if it's something that you and I can work, China, finite a little bit.
Yeah.
We're really gearing up now to start the lead service inspections. I think the deadline is, I think it's spring of 2024 for that. Do you remember what month they were saying?
No, they've just, when I've heard from it from Bolton Point, they say 2024.
Yeah.
I was hoping that was the end of the year.
And this is?
I think of 2054.
Yeah, me too.
Because I thought that the actual enforcement of it would start 2025, but let's check with Bolton.
I have it, I just, I didn't look at it before I come down. I was more concerned about getting to that water break.
I think it may be, it's a matter of, as long as you've got things identified, we've already got a list, it's just a matter of start ticking those off however we can administratively or through a drill.
I reported on it a few months ago, a little bit during this trustee meeting and now it's really hammered down. We got to get figuring it out. We just did, we just received the list from Bolton Point.
The updated list.
Month and a half ago.
Right.
And, and they kind of told us it was coming and what they do is they vetted it through their, their system to see if there was a way they could trim that number down by via Asbelts drawings of some sort. I think we can trim, when they changed to the census meters in the village, in their district, which is the ones that sent electronically for the meter reading, they took a picture of the meter and the copper line inside the house. So we, we might be able to isolate from the curb stop to the inside of the house just by those pictures. That's one way. We still may have to do an exploratory dig from the main to the curb stop itself, which is better because it gives us a little bit more flexibility on where we're digging versus digging at the curb stop, which 90% of them are in some kind of a planting or driveway, could be there's something that they just mounted in the driveway.
Yeah.
And that gets, that gets expensive, you know, you have to do all that restoration. So like, there's like 166 or 160 of them, which is a lot. It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
The Heights is doing it by hydraulic water excavation. They use basically, it's water jetting the dirt and then they use a vat truck to suck the dirt out. And they're having to do a pretty good sized hole, like a 24 by 24 hole to be able to get down in there and scrape the line on each side of the curb stop. Some of them are nine foot deep. They were averaging three a day at $2,500 a day. So, you know, you do the math, it's like 53 for us and it's like 140 of thousand and that's if you can get three, some of them being really deep. But that creates a lot of spoils. When you use hydraulic excavation, you have to go dump that truck someplace and it creates a lot of spoils and then you have to import stuff. I'm thinking just a nice narrow bucket and just taking a few scoops out, we can probably get there just as quick that way and probably get more done. The only, it's, it's a little bit cheating with the hydraulic excavation because it's the only mechanism that you can excavate without having a dig save.
Dig save, yeah, right.
You can't, technically you can't even put a shovel on the ground until you do that, but you can hydraulically excavate with a vat truck legally without. So that's a lot of dig save tickets to call in.
Yes.
That's, that's what we're gearing up to now. We are in the process of ordering the, the material for Norway extension to the north. They, it's in our budget. They donated 20,000 to the village to close the ditches up there. And, and we want that part because there's no place for them to put the snow along the roads because it's all landscape and driveways. And with this storm system that we're putting in, we're not going to allow them to plant anything back in that area. It's just be lawn and then they compile the snow there for the winter. They have been dragging it up to the road, pushing it to the end of the road, which is just a huge liability for everybody, the village, the landowner and the snowplow driver. I, I, I'm going to keep it real short. Is there any concerns, questions, invoices? We did pave Oak Crest Road too.
Yeah.
That come out really nice. We went a little deeper with that than normal. Normally we mill an inch and a half out, put an inch and a half back, especially around curbed areas. The road was really breaking up and then when we dug the piping across there last month, the big, big pipes that we put in, we noticed that the blacktop and the bases and all that breaks, so we milled down four inches and put two and a half inches of binder back in it and then an inch and a half of top. So we should get a good lengthy time out of that road.
And it was, it was past due time for that?
Yeah, it was, it was a little overdue, but we were kind of holding off because we knew we had the sewer project going on in Fuga Heights. We didn't know if we were coming up through there at all. The geography of that didn't allow us to come up without gravity wise. So we would have to put some kind of pump station in at the bottom of Oak Crest, gravity down to that and then pump into the high pressure line.
Were we able to expand it at all and make it better for walking Oak Crest?
Oh, it's wide. It's 20, it's, no, it's the same width, but I mean, we're going to stripe it. It's typically, it's wider most roads.
So you can paint the sides kind of a little more.
We're going to try to cheat the lanes a little bit narrower so it makes it look like it. You know, the theory behind it, I was talking to the guy at the county, it's, you know, and we always known this too. We, the narrower your line sometimes makes drivers feel like they really got to pay attention. They slow down.
Yeah.
So, but, but you're only allowed to go so narrow by the manual uniform of traffic control devices, which is basically striping and signage.
It's amazing what paint.
It is, it is. You know what? We had it, we put it in a development one time, long line and I got a lot of phone calls. They didn't like it. Because it kind of took that residential feel out of it.
Oh, that was me. I called about Shannon Park.
Yeah, but after people had it on.
It totally changes the way it looks.
Yeah, it does.
However, I now use it as my pickleball court, so.
Right.
Made a little lemonade out of my lemons. I actually don't like the look, but I feel like.
What look specifically outside?
So when I moved to Shannon Park, it was not, it was not striped.
Yeah.
And then about five years ago?
It's been longer than that.
Okay, maybe 10 years ago, John striped it and I was like, do we, do we need these? And there was no, no reason to stripe it. It looked, it was, there was no hazard or whatever. But then John told me, I think this is even before I joined the trustees.
Yeah.
John told me, once they input, once they install a traffic device, taking it out makes you look real bad if anything.
It's an act of Congress, yeah.
So, once it was too late. If we had discussed it beforehand, maybe they didn't need to stripe it, but now it's too late.
Yeah.
Oak Crest is a way busier.
Yes, absolutely.
It's not a 55, but it's effectively a 55. People zip down.
But what we did though, once we started developing our striping, and there was a big debate in, with the board members, because I brought it up, you know, I just didn't on a whim do that. And then we kind of had a, had a talk and, and then once we started doing it, it really felt a little comfort to pedestrians. Having that walking and line and then when we paved the road, usually let a road cure for a little bit before you put the stripes back on. I was getting calls like, when are you putting the stripes back on? When are you putting the stripes back on? So I mean, it's bittersweet, you know, at that rate.
I can tell you personally that Deborah and I walked Warren Road and since they removed the striping after they repaved it, it's, makes me nervous.
Yeah.
Those people don't pay attention to where their buffer is for their vehicles, especially the trucks.
It's on there now. They just striped it.
Good.
Tuesday, Monday morning, Tuesday morning, Thursday morning. They did it at night.
That's time we walked it.
And that's kind of, that's when ours may go in at night, just because it's a, it's a little easier with traffic control and not as much signage and flat cones to put on the line.
Right.
So I know I had a couple of people up in Janovars that were really upset with us when we striped at night. It was a school night, first day of school and yeah, so I try not to, I try to be cautious when we do it, you know?
It's hard.
But we're going to strike Dart, Dart and Graham, even though we're going to be digging them up next year. We're going to, we're just using waterborne paint, which is the cheapest paint you can get. And it lasts about a year. And the reason why we're doing it is because there's not very good stripes on there right now and, and that was a typical striped road, being a thorough fair road.
Yeah, they'd use a one-year, that's going to be torn up, so.
Yeah, yeah, but, but I feel like there's the, just to kind of scratch some of the liability away from the municipality is to get it striped.
Yeah.
We're going to be digging a good share of it up today, so we're going to be putting the blacktop back. I mean, it is massive.
So you're, before you leave, are you done? You just grabbed your hat like you're walking out the door?
Watermelon.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good.
Are you running out the door?
I'm in a minute after you.
Okay, well, when you were going to go around the room and ask, does anybody have anything else?
Yes.
I was going to suggest that we have a longer formal discussion, obviously not today or now, about hiring for the BW staff. Because it just seems like we have so much to do and I was just kind of trying to maybe thinking we should have a brainstorming session about what jobs. Obviously we don't want to subcontract out the mowing. It's everybody's favorite. We want to find, I was thinking that, but I was thinking like, we want to hire, or maybe we want to talk about hiring, but maybe we don't want to talk about hiring the most entry level person. Maybe we want to talk about maybe discreet planning or facilitating jobs that would most help you. So I was just going to ask you, you go, but I was just asking, starting thinking about.
Talk about it.
Thinking about what kind of a position would be most beneficial to helping you facilitate all these enormous projects like dump drive and the sewer, just everything.
So, so what we did this year is, as normal years, we, we were taking more jobs on ourselves. This year it has been better by taking smaller jobs on, like, look, I put the numbers up on the table on what it would cost the village to do to put sidewalks on, on Dart Drive. I just don't feel with, ever since COVID hit, it's tough to get any help at all. And it's tougher contractors. If you did hire a subcontractor to help you, it's tough to get, for them to get. I mean, every, every person you talk about, there is a deficiency in, in help and, and the physical aspects of what we do every day. So what we did was we took, we took smaller jobs on this year and my, my goal is to contract the sidewalk installation on Dart Drive versus taking that on ourselves. It's going to cost the village more money. But it kind of brings us back into the DPW.
By like a full salary, by like 60,000?
Oh, no, like double, like say 800,000 versus 400,000.
Yeah, that's about double.
Yeah. But this, but the point is, even if we did hire three more guys, once that project's done, you still got, you're still stuck with those three guys. You know what I mean? So it's not.
You always have projects.
We do, but, but a lot of days, I can be stagnant. I, I've, I've worked here for almost 19 years. I like what we do, right? I like to stay busy. My guys like to stay busy. It's, it's, it just creates a better atmosphere than a stale mines, the devil's playground, than to do nothing. If you look at some municipalities, and I'm not knocking anybody, some municipalities just do the normal day-to-day activities of a DPW. They pick leaves up.
And they hire.
They do brush and they have 10 people working there and, and this and that. And you know what? They're fine with that. They contract everything, like they're paving and Fuga Heights, for instance, it's not a really great road infrastructure. It's deficient and I don't even want to go there. But we, we choose to be busy so that, so we have a lot to report and we're not saying that we always necessarily need more help, but we choose to be busy. And, and if we, we see, we do a lot of hazard mitigation out there. I mean, we're looking for potholes and sidewalk deficiencies and stuff, so we choose to be busy. But you know, there's two times of the year where you can't do anything and that's spring and fall where that's the problem. Hiring another full-time guy might, might, might hurt that, that, that time of year, so.
Well, do the water thing. I was just, I was just thinking about, maybe thinking about it a little differently. Instead of like a, like a, another lower level person, what if it was more of a, someone who was good at, at just taking some of the planning off of your plate? I don't know, that's just, just think about it.
Yeah, no, yep.
That's what I was thinking. It might be helpful to you.
I just, from my experience, I mean, I know what you're saying. You want to really get more, more done, it might be easier for these guys. But it's sort of my experience that there, through construction, that there is a maximum of efficiency point. Whereas if you go over that with too many people, you're taking away from, like for example, John or the position I was in with my businesses. If I had too many guys that took away from what I could do, so you never really made that step forward by hiring more people. I don't know exactly what their maximum efficiency point is, but.
I agree with that. I agree with that 100%.
Okay, alright.
And what I've been doing lately is delegating more. I've been more of the PR guy on this, just, I would just, because you guys got to me a little bit when we were talking about board, how to, how to kind of more or less delegate, you know what I mean? And, and I've always been good at delegating. I've been a supervisor capacity for 20 years, you know? I was elected official superintendent for 10, 10 years, five two-year elected terms. I know how to, I know how to do it. One of my best expertise is, is dealing with the public, PR work. And so on that sewer project, we had what they call a constructive administrator do like the more, more of the inspection. So that kind of took away of my responsibility and relieved a lot of load from myself. And so they did that through TJ Miller. So we did it through professional services. So they're documenting the daily inspection reports and this and that, and that relieved a lot from me. But when they run into a snag, then it's me to go out and meet with the people and try to deal with the, the finites of where their service goes and, and this and that. And you planting, you know, we took, we, we got outside of the construction limits. We've done some damage. And that's what I've been doing a lot more of on that particular job is, is the PR work, going, dealing with people and settling things down, causing, you know, getting rid of conflicts with maybe a contractor had noise and the landowner didn't like it. So that's what the things that I've been dealing with. So I've, I've taken some of the food off my plate at that point and it's been a relief and we've been really productive and we haven't taken those big jobs on this year. We've been doing small jobs, the storm work, the little storm worked us up at Norway. We did the park, you know what I mean? We could have contracted the park out. We would have been into that a ton of money by contracting the whole thing out, but we built the pavilion ourselves. We did the concrete work ourselves. I mean, we didn't have to do that. So sometimes hiring more people that I, you know, I might hit the nail on the head is your maximum efficiency at that point. Sometimes too much help can be, can be worse. Now you're going putting out fires between your health, you know what I mean? But I agree, we need to think about it. We do need to do something and, and I appreciate you caring enough to, you know, think about that. But we do like to stay busy and we work a lot. We like to do what we do in the village and village is an awesome place. They give us enough money to keep doing things. It's, it's really, really good place. I've been in the municipality where you had to use the same boat over and over and over and over and it's, you know, it's not, it's not practical. Costs you more money at the end, you know, so, but I appreciate that.
Thing I've said to you before, John, I think I've said it for everyone.
Yes.
Cry uncle when you feel like it's time to bring someone on board for sure, but I think it's worth a discussion between us around all of us constantly bringing this up.
Yes.
If we can't find a way, I'm thinking more of administrative, any of the stuff, paperwork, paperwork and stuff that, that someone could do and that would keep you out in the field doing your PR work and doing the things you're naturally good at. And the things I'll, if you're like me, the things you hate are the paperwork.
Yeah, well, if I had to make a quick decision on it, it would be more of an MEO again. That's where we need, that's where we need help. Administratively, if you have a guy sick, that's, you need that, you need a person in the snowplow if you have a sick snowplower. You know what I mean? That, and that's, and that's where, and I'm not trying to belittle anybody, you need a few more ants right now to move the stuff than, than anything. And that, that's a lot of our problem is, is if I had to say there was any deficiency in our DPW, it's, it's a shortage of the MEO slash labor than anything.
Right.
That's, that's where, if I had to hit the nail on the head, and that lightens me up enough to go do the paperwork that I need to do.
Okay.
You know, if I was just going to make a quick judgment on that, that's out.
Alright.
Is there any questions on the invoices or bills or anything?
No.
As long as you're in a good mood and you feel nice and warm inside, the planning board has asked that if you are striping, if you would stripe these out here.
Yeah, I noticed.
I saw it.
Oh, thank you very much.
I noticed it, actually, the whole idea is we want to pave the parking lot. It's, if you can see, it's gray. It's really super oxidized from the sun beating on it. That, I have it in the budget to do it, but we have had so much rain this year and the contractors booked off. I mean, you call a contractor right now to get any work done in your house and I think you're probably got, not, you're going to be told not until next year. And that's, and that's where we are right now. And I don't want to open this pavement up by milling it and then have it rain for the next two days and can't put it back. Now we got a hazard, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But.
They just had me ask that.
No, I, you know, for, for what it is, the striping on that's really simple. We can easily put that back, even if we are going to pave it this year, we need to put the striping.
Is there some more inexpensive one-year striping?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they charged us, I think it was last month, what was it? 300 bucks last month to do the striping at the, at the park. Wasn't a lot.
Yeah.
You know, so they use waterborne. They typically don't use glass beads on there for retro reflectivity in a parking lot situation because it just, they get slippery. You know, stripes are slippery. When you take off at an intersection, you could feel your wheels chirp when you go over the stop bar. They're slippery. That's why there's a lot of motor vehicle and bike accidents, you know? But crack ceiling and striping are probably the number one cause for pedestrians, bicycle or motorcycle accidents.
Striping on the side of the road?
Yeah, they, when they, like when motorcycles lean into it, they come over, if they drift a little bit, they get in that and it just lets it go. It's like putting marbles on the road.
Ever thought about that?
Yeah.
Don't fuck on the stripes.
Yeah, but if you don't have striping, now you're creating a bunch of mitigations, so.
Yeah.
It's been a pleasure and like, if you need anything, email me, call me, whatever.
Yeah, if anything comes up, questions or so forth, I'll, I'll send them on to you and copy everyone.
And if you get off and we're still working on that water break, if you want to throw something up on the website that, because we're probably going to shut that road right down, so.
How long do you think it'll be closed?
It's not looking good because it, it, the water's coming out so long of a distance, it's going to be hard to find it, hard to find the break. So we're, we're going to have some asphalt tore up.
Okay. Good luck, John.
See you. Take care.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Not pretty, I'll tell you.
Okay. Is it okay if we let Bern Blozzy go since he's a guest? Okay, Bern, we're going to go into your deer management plan. It's kind of out of our normal cycle, but that's, that's okay. I've got the, the DDP application with me here, so why don't you take over and tell us a little bit about the deer management plan for, for this year?
Almost what John is talking about. It's a maintenance issue right now, right? So I would be happy if we would be more successful. We're a little stagnant in what we can do. The conditions have been improved over the last decade or 15 years, how long I have been involved in this one, but they're definitely not where they need to be. The surrounding municipalities and particularly the city of Ithaca keep on donating to the Village of Lansing. Unappreciated donations in terms of those than bucks that come in, so we would like to do it again. And what I'm asking you to do today is just sign the application so that we can submit it to the DEC with a start date. I don't know exactly how you operate it because there's some question of whether you can authorize it today to do it or, or not fully authorize it. You need to tell me, Ronnie, but it would be important to get it to the DEC to then have them review it, approve it and then maybe the next trustee meeting formally approves it. I'm not sure how your procedures are going there. That would be my, my preference. As I said, the start date would be October 1st. We're operating under the same premises as in the years before, although we are losing unders to age and age restriction and moving out of town. So at some point I may need to do some recruiting to get some new blood in, into the system. The DEC is not making our situation easier. Years ago, they put a restriction on how far bait piles need to be moved away from a public road. That restricts a lot of the places that we used to be able to do it. We can't. So there's a very limited number of properties that we are able to, to utilize for, for this. Yeah, I can answer any questions that you may have about it. The summaries, as you saw, if you've just, I guess Jody distributed my report.
Yes, she did.
So we're about as, as we were last year, the efficiency in the way that we're operating with about four hours per deer taken and that's extraordinary. So that isn't a test to how people are able to do it, if they're able to do it at night. So that's the, that's the key. Again, if you have questions, please ask me. I'm happy to go in, but I also don't want to waste time if it's not needed.
Does anyone have questions?
I just have a question. On the, on the map that was sent around, there were some yellow dots that I think, I don't have it in front of me, noted potential sites or recommended or suggested. I can't remember the word of where deer hunting could occur. And you mentioned the sites they needed. And I just know from a family, my, my wife would love more deer control around us and one of the dots was on SD, around SD. I was just wondering, for example, are those, what's the holdup on some of those or do you, what do you need to kind of open up?
Okay, so you and I can talk about this. I'm happy to add situations. The yellow dots that we have on the map that you saw are places that the Board of Trustees approved as shooting locations.
Okay.
Not just the Board of Trustees, but also obviously the landowners, right? So the first you have a landowner agreement and the Board of Trustees needs to approve that. Now the DEC put limitations on us by saying a bait pile, not necessarily a place where from where you shoot, needs to be 150 feet away from a public road. So we used to have situations where we were hunting on SD. So, um, we used to have situations where we were hunting on SD and we were hunting at Bolton and other places. We've given up on some of those just because of the setback restrictions that the DEC or the lawyers that the DEC put on us. Um, that was not when the program started and I haven't heard anything that that has changed.
Okay.
So, um, you know, SD, obviously with the steep terrain that you have there is a difficult situation. Um, I don't personally want to drag a deer from the shore up. So, um, and, uh, boat access may be, may be difficult, but I'm happy to talk to you. If there is a possibility where you feel, oh, here's a, here's a location and we would be able to arrange, um, um, the possibility, if it's within the legal limits of what the DEC sets to us. The other part is you will see that we try to disperse the different locations across the village. So we don't have five locations all within half a mile or so, because this would be the same deer that would be coming to that bait pile. So that's the efficiency, but bait that you have a radius where the deer would come in and find it. So you don't need to go after each individual in their little backyard. Happy to talk about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then I will move that you allow me as mayor to, uh, sign the deer damage permit application to, uh, be sent to the DEC and to start this year's, uh, deer management plan.
Second.
Susan Angelique seconds. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Bern, in this case, I will sign this application. Uh, I will fax you a copy of it this afternoon, so you won't have to come. But the original will be with Jody. Uh, Jody's not here.
Can you actually, Ronnie, can you scan it to me? That would make it so much easier for me.
I, I will find a way of getting it to you electronically.
Okay.
So I've got.
I don't, I don't have a fax and then I need to scan it myself. So if you send me a scan or you can sign actually the PDF. I don't know whether that's a capability that you have there, that would be perfect.
I, I can sign it. I can scan it from home and send it to you. And then I can bring the original back in and put it on Jody's desk for filing.
Okay, that's fine. And I will forward it to Courtney, um, at the DEC and I will CC Jody and you on, uh, on that email. So you have a record of it.
Perfect, Bern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
We're all done. I just have to scan it and send it to you now.
Good, perfect. Much appreciated.
Uh huh, you're welcome. Thanks, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
An iPhone?
Uh, yes.
You can scan it right now.
Just send them a.
You can scan it with the, can I do it? I can scan an email to you both. It's with the, with the camera.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to do that?
You're welcome to do that, uh, just as long as the quality is good enough for Bern to use.
Scan.
Okay. Carolyn's going to be, oh, he's already off. That's all right. If it doesn't work, I've got a scanner at home that I can.
It's gonna work.
I can do it, okay. I don't trust the, the quality on, on my phone.
We'll see how it works. See if you like it.
Okay, Mike?
I don't have a lot of code and, um, items to share. Everything's pretty much gone as it usually does. Um, I went through some of the planning board, uh, items that are happening and some that are coming up. The most recent one is the beer cluster subdivision, which, um, over here, if you want to take a look at, that's pretty close to being the final plat. Uh, just had a engineer's meeting to, uh, take care of some of the, uh, other minor issues like easements. Uh, we'll be taking off a lot of the easements, um, that they had suggested going through the EWA. Can't have an easement for your, can't give yourself an easement if you own the property. So that's basically to, in order to enter in and handle any stormwater, uh, issues that we may have to do. Um, we're going to make sure that that is, is blanketed within our stormwater maintenance, uh, stormwater maintenance agreement that we will have with the bears. Um, and if you remember, we're, we're headed more towards not taking control of the stormwater facilities, but having that, that maintenance, uh, uh, agreement so that it holds the, the homeowners responsible for their own stormwater maintenance, uh, similar to what we have over here at the mall with that situation. While I'm on that subject, um, they're still getting another estimate. But the estimate they have at this point to clear out the western, uh, stormwater ditch is they're looking at sometime in October to do it. Uh, which like John had mentioned, uh, if you're a contractor now and you're not busy, then really not worth having around. So, um, that's, that's kind of brutal, but that's the way it is. Uh, the other items that are becoming up the next meeting, uh, we're hoping to have the bears come back so that we can verbally, uh, so the planning board can verbally approve the final plat. We can't, we can't officially sign the plan. There is a few other items in the code that, uh, that David Beer has to do before then, such as produce estimates, uh, escrows, just easements, there's a lot of other items to, to be handled there. Also what the planning board will have the next meeting, uh, we'll have Eric Getzmann in here for his public hearing for, um, he's requesting a, uh, year extension for phase two. We have the two buildings down here in Lansing Meadows that aren't built. Uh, and then we'll be having what you, uh, have already seen with the 20 boomax PDA. Uh, Alex Mirgo will come in here and probably give the same presentation to the planning board because they didn't get the benefit of, of what you did, getting from beginning to end, his presentation. Um, one of the other items coming up, um, if you remember Cornell had, uh, land that they have sold at Uptown Road for development. Um, everyone remember going through all of that. Uh, Stephen Fur is who, uh, we've been dealing with and, and Ronnie's been in on some of these meetings. Uh, he's from Peak Code Real Estate. Uh, I think, I believe they're based out of Atlanta. Um, they're going to be coming to the board for the special permit for that multi-unit complex. What he has asked me and this is Stephen Fur is because the project, the special permit fee is based similarly to, well, actually the same as a building permit fee. So the cost for the special permit application is going to be, um, 200, a hundred dollars plus $4 per thousand cost of the project. Well, as, as you can imagine, this is a $15 million project. They're going to have to pay $60,000 for a special permit application and then turn around and pay another 60 for the building permit application. What Stephen has asked me to do, and I spoke with Ronnie and he's allowed me to come here and, and, and get your opinion on this is Stephen has asked me if he would be able to, if his company would be able to do installments with the special permit process. It's my opinion that this whole process is probably going to take four to six meetings. So you're talking about two to three months. And he is asking that they were able to be, be able to, instead of working out the $60,000 to be able to extend that as they go through in case this doesn't, you know, in case it's not approved. And his justification for that is he's had a few projects, uh, one he, he cited in Tennessee that he ended up paying close to $20,000 for, uh, an application. And the first day he stepped into the planning board, they said, we don't want this. He lost his $20,000. I tried to reassure him that our planning board is a little more thorough than that and they don't generally act that way. Um, but he has wondered if he could, you know, he came to me and I said, okay, I'll at least ask. So I'm kind of throwing that in your hands, whether he can.
Right now the expected timing as is would be the special permit would be 60, I think he said. And then the building permit would be about 60.
60 also.
Like a year or two later or what?
Um, maybe not a year or two. I might, it might be, they might be prepped to go three months after they get a special.
Okay, so it's like, be 120 over a three-month period.
But, um, I know you haven't asked my opinion, but I hate opening up a can of worms like that. I'm not going to have everybody asking for that, but it's, it's understandable. I see his point of view on this and that's why I'm, why I'm asking you your opinion.
Well, opinion is, it's cost of doing business should be in his business plan. If he doesn't have it in the business plan, bad luck. You're in the wrong business.
Thank you, Wolfgang. You, you're much more clear and concise because we certainly would like to work with developers. However, my attitude is, it's a cost of business. If they want a project, it's in the budget someplace.
Carol?
I'm okay with that position. I, I, I do not like that I've seen in the past that the bigger the company, the more exceptions they ask for. And the little guys often don't think to ask for the exceptions. So I am inclined to hold everybody to the same standard. And that's the most fair.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, uh, so the rules are what they are and, um, I don't know, you know, if there's some kind of, if we'd be giving something and it would be something, you know, uh, that would cost at least an interest to the village.
So I was wondering, I wouldn't be so opposed to a payment plan. You're still paying it all, but you want to write three checks.
If there's some kind of horse, if, you know, we're getting something, the village is getting something either. If he wants to pay a higher interest rate than, you know, or something like that, then maybe normal to do it or, you know, something else. But I just, other than just kind of saying, I want to do this, it's kind of like, well, that's how the rules are. So there has to be some kind of benefit, I guess, as well, because there is a cost to the village.
I bet Jody, if Jody were here, she'd say there's some regulation against us.
Yeah, that, that's probably true too.
That's be my guess. Normally when we have creative ideas, she shoots them down right away, it's illegal.
Yeah, that sounds kind of fishy.
Then we're like a bank.
Yeah, right. That's probably right. That's probably, you're probably absolutely right.
I'm sure she would say no to that.
As I said out loud, I was like, that does sound like, yeah. So, but there does have to be some kind of, I mean, it's just to kind of make an exception. I'm not sure, um, in favor of that, because there is a cost, yeah.
I'll jump in with my limited years of experience with the planning board and certainly with Carolyn's. You've been on the planning board, you've worked, I mean, they look at and they work hard just to initially, from day one, to pay attention.
Like the opposite, the flip side argument is that this project is very expensive. And it's not like the planning board would look at a $1 million project and be like, we're on the clock. We only got to give you guys an hour and a half. These guys are 15 million, we'll give them 15 hour. Like that's not how they operate. So this is paying a higher hourly rate for time because it will have more issues, but it doesn't always turn out that the most expensive projects are the ones with the most issues. In fact, sometimes they're so well financed and well planned that they have less problems. So that is the flip side argument. However, I think the hard line of everyone is treated the same is the most fair. Yes, I do too.
I think if this project, it does get rejected or turned down, it won't be because the planning board or the village doesn't want it, it'll be because it's not feasible. Say it is a traffic study or something. It's going to be something that it's not so much the planning board's opinion as it is, okay, these are the hard facts. It's just not going to work, so. I don't, he's concerned about the actual planning board itself, which is what it sounds like in Tennessee. Um, I don't think he's going to run it.
Well, many, many people come before the planning board, just feel us out. Like, why don't you tell him to unofficially present, I mean, an idea? That happens all the time.
I don't think this is a, I, I know, I do know what you mean, but I think this is more than a feeling out thing. I think they're gung ho on doing this. You're just concerned, he's just concerned about putting up the money and it not getting the due diligence.
Well, I guess I would offer him that, say, if you want to preliminarily come and make sure no one's going to just do the Tennessee on you, then, or Texas, wherever that was.
I see what you're saying.
Then go ahead, but other than that, once you want to apply, you apply pursuant to the rules, not apply to everybody.
They, they've sort of done that.
Oh, okay.
Well.
They know something about that.
They, 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 they've been at this for what, close to two years now, I think. When they first, first came in, they kind of gave us a, a napkin drawing. It was more formal than a napkin drawing, but it was, you know.
So hench, a napkin.
Yeah, 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 an engraved napkin. But, uh, you know, we said, yeah, it looks great. I, I, you know, we, we've already given them that. Now, if they've changed it substantially, yeah, they should come back and say, okay, this is the original plan we gave you. We started, but after some time, we've decided to do this, come in and ask us. But before you put down the $60,000, you know, make yourself, assure yourself that you're not wasting your money and come ask us, you know? And, and we're perfectly willing to do that. But I agree with, with all of you is that if we do this for one, we automatically make it available to everyone. Okay, after this point.
And the fact, and you're good then, otherwise you're doing differently.
Yeah, I think we have to. It's, it's, it would be legally, it would be irresponsible and open us up to litigation if we did not.
And we are also developing a stronger relationship initially.
Yeah.
With the developer and we're all in agreement. So moving forward, I should think the process should be more open and honest and transparent or whatever big word you want to use, because this is a big project.
Yeah, definitely. Is that on the overall cost, Mike?
15 grand, which I think, or 15 million, which I think is low anyway.
Yeah, so that 60,000, $120,000 is not insignificant, but from a percentage standpoint, it's fairly small investment for them to make with the village.
And it's costs that they would have, it's there, they expect. I can imagine as a developer.
Yeah, I think, I think so too. It's not like we've hidden the amount, they've had the amount, they've known that it's so.
It's less than a percent. And you know, a percent with this kind of timeframe they're looking for, there is much more noise in their costs and things like that than 120.
Yeah.
Much more.
Ours is not an escalating cost, it's a time cost. With time, that's not going to change.
And it's, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an easy amount to put in because it's there and it's locked in. We won't be, okay. So do you think that answers, I mean, basically say, you know, if, if, if they think we might reject the plan, give us a plan that, that is as close as possible to what the final will be and see what we say. And then after they got that, yeah, let's, let's go for it. Come in and drop the money in and start the process.
I will pass that one.
Okay, okay.
I don't know.
So.
You know, if, if somebody is afraid of being rejected, and I guess they know the rules and they know the ordinances and what we have here.
I, you know. Should we have concerns?
I, I would have major concerns here, you know, that I'm looking at something which violates left and right and whatever, you know? So, pretty straightforward, you know? And as you know, I'm burned by these kind of violations of ordinances, big time.
I will pass that. And that's really all I, all I have. I don't have any other news as far as zoning and so.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, we'll go around the table. Wolfgang, you have anything to say?
Well, you send this consulting project out.
Yeah, we'll discuss that in a little bit. If, yeah, that, that's on, that's on the list, we'll get around to that. But anything beyond?
On that.
Joint Youth Commission, I think we've got you in line with the person to contract.
Yeah, I, I need to send him an email and ask him why, why he didn't respond to the village and whatever. But other than that, uh, I'm going to deal with that. Should be okay.
Okay.
No, other than that, normal stuff, I think.
Okay, Susan?
And speaking of joint commission, we did Zoom Tuesday night and still concerns with budgets and two percents and.
With who? With Joint Youth or somebody else?
Uh, Joint Youth, but just in terms of funding and how the county will, if it's a 2%, maybe not, um, increase in their funds and which programs do they want to cut, um, or limit.
What programs are they talking about cutting?
Um, Cottington is doing beautifully. Uh, is it Learning Partnership? There's one of them, um, that is underperforming and in terms of students served. So concern and a little bit of leeway considered.
Learning Partnership is the one that finds internships?
Yes.
Yeah, they don't have staff for that position. That's why it's underperforming. The person quit and they didn't replace them.
Right. And they're assessing their needs and they've sent a letter to the board, um, uh, the ledge, um, supporting, just staffing. So. we'll just have to wait and see. But it sounds like we'll be, Joint Commission will be lenient for the next year, given the constraints that they have had in terms of budget and staffing and COVID. So, and I stopped by, Joanne's on my way in, the district, what I assumed was the district manager.
No, actually, no, that's not the one that provides, I think Learning Web is the one.
Oh, Learning Web, yes.
Yeah, no, Learning Partnership is something else, teach out them in schools.
Right.
Okay, yeah, maybe that is underperforming, I don't know anything about it.
So it's not Learning Web?
It just has so many organizations.
I know.
There should be one.
Don't you wish? So it's very confusing.
Learning Partnership, Learning Web.
But when we are contributing 17,000 plus, so, you know, then when I'm looking at that, you know, I get a little more, you know, don't give me an excuse, you know, and how are we spending our money? And if we don't want to give them the 2%, we'll give them what they can. We feel it's fair and right, because we do not serve many students from Lansing.
No.
The village of Lansing.
Again, they served all my kids in many ways and Nathan got a fantastic internship, actually.
You've been so supportive.
I'm trying to figure it out as I was looking at my phone.
Learning something.
There's just too many.
So I did.
But Nathan got a fantastic internship, definitely helped him get into college, gave him great experience, he worked the best team of the earth.
But they haven't been able to continue that level.
And Teddy got an internship at Reonics, which was great. Also put that in his college resume, got him interested in bioengineering. So good comes out of it, but you really have to seek it and know, like, it's not, it's not well known, it's not well organized. The people quit, that's how I know the people quit, because my kids are doing it.
Right, I mean, they always quit for a reason. And anyway, on my way, I stopped at Joanne Fabric and I was checking out and the district manager was, they were talking, talking behind the counter and with regard to staffing issues. And I said, because I'm going to a meeting to discuss retail, you're not closing, are you? So I, well, he assured me they were not closing. However, the lady at the checkout counter was driving every day from Vestal.
It's a long way.
She decided that maybe she'd like to not do that job in Ithaca. So when we look at retail, and I'll let, let you carry it on.
It's a common problem. I mean, a lot of, I think, I, I, I think there's an estimate that like 70%, 75% of our workforce lives outside of the county.
Yes, I mean, I mean, you just look at all the big box stores down.
Everyone's having problems.
13th South.
Yeah.
These people do not live here.
No.
Trader Joe's, Joanne's.
Yeah, that's, it's rough.
I told the district manager I would bring it up.
I wish there was something the village could do to solve that problem.
Wants a coupon?
Well, the county's efforts or the state's efforts to do things, but we just really can't.
No, that's right.
We can't control the housing market, which makes it inexpensive for people to live here.
Same story.
It's, it's, it's an ongoing problem, it has been for years. So we will get around to the market, the retail study thing. So, so that's on our topic, but I still want to go around. Anything else, Susan?
No, no.
My, my input to this is, I started on both Youth Services Board and Joint Youth Commission. They're both good for the various aspects, but Joint Youth Commission does a really good job for the county youth. And we have to realize that we're supporting, really, we're supporting the county youth. We don't have a lot of youth in the village that use it, but we're supporting youth in our, in our county to do the right thing. And this, and to, to teach them how to apply for jobs, write their resume, be responsible when they have a job, show up, do the right thing, do the work. And that, that's, that's a really good learning lesson for kids at that age. Kids just aren't really taught how the real world works once they're away from education. And that's the beginning. And it's a really good beginning and they do a good job. They, they work very hard with what seems like a lot of money, but when you think about all the youth they do serve and the services they provide, it's not a lot of money. So I will always support us giving them as much as we possibly can. But that's our decision. If, if we ever decide that we don't want to pay what they're requesting, we want to pay a little bit less, I'm fine with that too. The thing I don't want to do is to stop supporting them, because I know you've got perspective on, they really do the right thing.
The Joint Youth Commission does great work in the middle school to keep children socially engaged, the ones that are feeling alienated. And that is a huge bonus to everybody within 50 miles of that child, so.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yeah, while, while social media is pulling people apart, they're helping them, that's a very good point. Thank you. Okay. Carol?
So Drew and I went on the boat to, with, oh, with the joint, joining of the various people in government. And the reason that I went was to maybe meet some people. And I did meet one person and I, that person was Ruth, is it Groff?
Groff.
So I went, met Ruth Groff and she is on the board of the Town of Lansing. And we had a great conversation and she said she's a friend of yours. And we talked a little bit about just Lansing and the village, town and village. And she did point out that Lansing village residents should be voting in the town elections, which I vote all the time. I thought I voted in every election, I have never voted in a town election, so even I didn't realize that. Then I told her, how do people in my neighborhood think they live in Kega Heights? So for sure they don't vote, they don't vote in the village elections, they don't even know that, they don't even know where they live. I do know where I live, I normally vote, but I typically don't vote in the town. So that's something that we should all start doing and thinking about. And she did explain to me a little bit, you know, because I do read the local papers and I thought I kind of was following on the whole gas station, Mirabado.
Yes.
Marabado, Marabado, Mirabado. The corner across from Rhodes Harbor, that's going to be what I thought was a gas station. No, 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 I don't know if you guys have that impression too. It is not a gas station, it is a like full on, like A1 sized truck stop with, you know, like, it's going to be just a ton of concrete and like parking for like, you know, tractor trailers and stuff. So I didn't quite realize the scale and scope as to why they were so upset about it. And it totally messes with their comprehensive plan, they want to create like a town center with a walking community. And this is like reverse, reverse, but they didn't have the zoning in place to prevent it, so then they had to go with it. So I didn't realize that, because that is, I don't think I've ever eaten at Rhodes Harbor, but it always looks so cute and it smells nice when your windows are open usually. But it's not going to be so nice to sit out there when there's like an enormous truck stop across the street. So that is too bad, because that place has been here for a long time.
It's a lot of light pollution too.
Oh, yeah, for the people sleeping there, because it's a hotel too.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's just an island of light, because they keep it lit 24/7.
So that, you know, that's really too bad, but she did talk about trails, we have, talked a lot about trails. And she was saying how she was impressed with the village's Greenway Trail Plan, that she had wanted to join up and make sure that all of our trails create a trail system. And she, she said she wants to be able to go from, from Myers Point to the village. And I was like, that's a trek. Better you than me. And she was like, no, she, she biked up, they, they're creating a bike path up that road and she biked it. And she said, but she e-biked it, which is not the same. I was like, well, I don't have an e-bike.
More and more e-bikes.
I don't have an e-bike, she said she saw like a full, like, you know, there's all those organized rides. She saw like a full organized ride at Myers Park and there was like 100 people and they were like, and then she's on her e-bike. Just like go right past them, so that was pretty funny. But she just, you know, we talked about the trails and just being, just the relationship between the village and the town. And I personally have never worked on that relationship, like I've never gone to a town board meeting, I've never voted in the town elections. But I do think that maybe we should do more. I wonder if we should do kind of like a citizens observer program, but like to the town and like mine of us.
That's excellent.
Mine of us goes to the town board meetings and reports back.
I mean, if.
If we care.
Because early on, when I came to Ithaca back in, no, 1970, I worked in Lansing.
Yeah.
I was a school lunch, school lunch manager, at the school. I lived in Lansing and until I came here, I, I lived at Horizons. So Lansing, I always went, because if I didn't want to go to downtown for groceries, you know, I'd scoot out.
I told her that I go to Lansing Trails, the town trails every week, I love those town trails. And we talked about the fact that when they were building those apartments, that people were like, it's going to ruin the trails. And I have to say, I use the trails every week and the building of that apartment has almost no impact on, yeah, they're to your left and, but you still have a beautiful view there. It's one of my favorite views in town, because it's like everything else is a gorge, so you're like in this narrow little space up there. You're, you've got a huge expansive space, so it's pretty much my favorite view in town. And I don't think that building really ruined it, but it was something to be concerned about, people were concerned, but it turned out to be fine. So we just talked about the trails, we talked about the relationships, and I think that we should think about the relationship. Although she did say that she's running for supervisor, is it called supervisor?
Yes, town supervisor.
She's running for town supervisor and she believes she'll win and that she wants to be a village ally. So we will have a village ally as a supervisor, which is a good place to start if she wins and if we all vote for her.
As an aside to that, I have yard signs for the last two village elections, when I lived on 51 Dart, saying that we could vote. All village residents can vote in the town election. We've had something on our website the last, at least the last cycle, we will this time too. We've put it in our newsletters, I don't know how, what else to do, have to go door to door and say, be sure you.
It didn't even get, it didn't even quite penetrate here and I do pay attention, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, well, it's, you know, we are actually part of the town.
Yeah.
We're an island, island of sanity within the town.
I won't tell what you said, because I'm your friend, so I ruin your relationship.
I think I've said something like that to her before and she won't mind. But no, no, we're, we're fortunate, you know, we get to, we, the village gets to vote in two municipality elections. Village and town, town doesn't vote in ours, but we get to vote in theirs. And they, when you go to the general election, you will see all of the state, federal elections and so forth, but the town will be there too. They're on your ballot, you can vote.
Where do villagers vote?
It would be for the general, wherever you vote for the general election in November.
Oh.
Here then, yeah.
Oh, then I have been.
It's only in November, do they only have elections?
Then I have been voting if it's on the ballot.
Yeah, yeah, it may be on the other side.
Oh, then I've definitely been voting, okay. I thought I had to go over there to vote.
No, it's, it's.
Because I always vote in every election.
Whatever your voting district number is, they will print out your ballot. That ballot is every, every office that's on that ballot, you can.
Have a voting, okay.
So, no, we, we try to get the word out, it's, we're unusual, we're unusual in that respect.
Okay, well, I think she's running unopposed, I think.
That's.
Said she thinks she's going to win, so.
Yeah, we're not sure, we've heard rumors about someone trying to run, but we don't think that they, they registered in time beyond the ballot, but there could be a write-in.
Okay.
So we don't know. That, that's the less I heard, so.
Well, when we have a Greenway meeting, we should just check in with, are we, are we linking up or are there things we can be doing? We could put in our Greenway agenda.
I attended a meeting last, last week with
She told me.
Part of the trail committee.
Yeah, that was before.
Jack, who's involved with the sewer line, it's, his name, the last name escapes me. But, yeah, they, they want to build a trail. The, the pathway is not yet solidified, so we're looking at different paths of how we could get a trail built from, say, town center down to the village and connect with our trails. So we're looking at a couple of different paths. One of them is a long trip hammer on Ken Horowitz's property. In the past, he has been totally against that, he didn't want to. But I, I told him that I would try it once more.
That would be a sweet draw.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, unfortunately, you're having to walk beside a, a major traffic.
Oh, I thought you meant like in his property.
No, I can tell you for certain that will not happen.
Okay, okay.
Not as long as Ken owns that property.
Okay.
But.
Is that the one right over here?
Yeah, yeah.
Huge property that you drool over every time you drive by. You're out there, you know, sticking your tongues out and burning his 100.
Right.
So.
Okay, well.
So we're in the process of that, so that's good.
Oh, great, yeah, so the one, the group of people, I talked, I talked to Ruth a little bit. The, some people on the Town of Ithaca and City of Ithaca, sustainable or sustainability or whatever they're.
Yeah, yeah.
On that, well, it's because I want to talk a little about the CCA and the Tompkins Green Energy Network, the TGEN, kind of see what the status was on that. So I don't know if you guys watched that video, I, I did, actually, my daughter was like, what are you watching? The, the CCA TGEN meeting they had, the city.
Oh, no, I didn't watch that.
Yeah, so just the, the main highlights really is that obviously City of Ithaca is the lead, just as a reminder. It's up for approval this month, they said in September, they're going to make the decision. It gets, so there's a simple side, it's really two parts. Basic CCA, which is municipal governments kind of aggregate for residents and purchase electricity and people can opt out. That's the basic CCA. There's an additive piece, which is a lot more complex. It doesn't get, it doesn't really, I think of it as an additive piece, it'll make it hard for us to communicate to the public, because it's complicated in that, again, it doesn't interfere with the basic structure, but it's essentially where TGEN is acting as a coordinator for projects and pooling projects together and then helping, working with some lenders, because it's a pooled project, economies of scale and lending, but also having investors, potentially even consumers can invest and be involved in these projects as well. Now, it doesn't require any government financing and it allows hospitals, nonprofits, we don't, you know, groups that can opt out or have to opt in to, I guess, the CCA, kind of like businesses and so forth, kind of actually encourage them to, to build some of this local resource, renewable energy. So, you know, we kind of want to make sure how we talk about that, and particularly because we don't want people to turn, you know, kind of the complexity of that to potentially get in the way.
Why is that complex? What's the complexity?
Well, there's issues like, you know, you could say, what happens if you sell the project? What happens to the investors? How do they, you know, get returns? You know, what's your relationship with the banks?
So what are they investing in?
They're investing in projects that individuals bring, kind of small projects. And it's not exactly clear.
They're like a venture fund?
No, they're not a venture fund, they're just, the TGEN itself is just coordinating, kind of pooling small projects together and go and saying, we have some banks that would be interested in these types of things, because it's a pooled set of projects.
Define projects, what are projects?
Well, they had some, they talked about commercial projects and they talked about.
Building projects.
Yeah, well, for a commercial.
So a building that was green or something?
If it's a dentist office, I think someone mentioned at one point, you want to put solar panels on the top. And if you have a group of these or you even have consumers in an apartment building or kind of a building that they own, different units in, I guess, it'd be more like a condo. And they want to put, put solar panels on for their.
You should just focus on those.
It gets complicated, because that's also.
It's a different thing.
It, it's a different thing and it's additive, I think it's the main thing we want to talk about here. It's something that we don't have to do whatsoever, our residents don't have to be involved in whatsoever. And there's a whole, I mean, again, this is a recorded call, so there wasn't a chance to ask a lot of questions and the plan has been approved yet. But you can watch like the second half of the call and there's a, there's a whole litany of things that's, you know, kind of could spiral out in a way. But not, again, the fact that it doesn't affect the budget, doesn't affect the core plan, I think.
Seems like a totally separate project, I don't understand why they're grouping them.
Well, they're doing it because with some of the CCAs, it doesn't necessarily encourage as much other renewable projects in the area and they kind of want to be, increase their, yeah, but it's.
Different thing at a time, hard enough to be in the CCA, we don't even have.
There's a number of reasons they have there that kind of talk about why other actors may not be incentivized to do this or to opt in. So it's not something that harms anybody, right? Doesn't cost anybody any money. It doesn't interfere with the basic CCA plan. So all it does is help people with financing renewable, renewable energy projects that they want to do. So I don't see it as a negative.
No, I only, the only negative I see is that like, let's get, let's keep our eye on the prize, which is a CCA that's functioning in town, that hopefully other municipalities are doing.
So the, the group that has done this has actually helped work on kind of, I guess, I guess the right word would be lobbying or working on drafting of legislation that'd be helpful for municipalities in terms of expanding the green energy, getting to net zero at a certain point or moving towards that goal. So they have experience in many different states and they, they're pretty active in New York, Local Power, I think was the group. So, yeah, the way they see it is this was part of the CCA, this is kind of their CCA plus, I think they call it. So packaging it together is all part of the, it's in the legislation, the way it's written. So it's kind of, in some ways you could say, well, keep it separate, but you could also say, well, this would really expand the reach of some of these things. And you can. of some of these things. And you can do it in one fell swoop as the legislation is designed in New York, what they were saying. So, so if anything, it expands the potential. There's a lot of details that I don't have on the detail.
It definitely adds complexity.
Did you hear, see, hear anything on the tape about inviting other municipalities?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. Once they get it approved, then they will invite other municipalities.
Because I'm very pro CCA and I would love to offer it.
Yeah, I think it would-
Will a municipality be able to join just the CCA part or would we be taking on all of that at the same time?
Well, I mean, the thing is, we, my understanding is we have to join the whole thing.
Okay.
But we wouldn't be taking on anything per se as far as-
And that's one of the reasons we're joining because-
Yeah, I mean, the second part is like-
Right, right.
Someone wants a project, they want to finance and they want to, it's a small project, they want to get investors. They can just work with, you know, the TGEN, okay, CCA administrator. And so that's just something that, hey, if you want, if you're thinking about, you know, doing community solar or kind of having a neighborhood solar project or, I don't, you know, I think there's other projects that would go in there, but I think that's probably the one that most commonly would be used.
Probably.
Yeah. So I did mention a few, yeah. I'm sure other, other things would probably fall in line. Maybe, you know, renovating a building for heat pumps or something like that probably fall in there too, I would imagine.
Let's get with, let's get with the Chris and Guillermo, can't remember the other guy's name, off the CSC, CSC, CCE.
Next meeting.
Yeah, the next, let's see if we can get all of us to watch that video and discuss it because they might, these are the Cornell Cooperative Extension people who are helping us with climate smart communities and clean energy communities. See if they have some input into this as to, would it improve our ability to meet those tasks? Do they have any experience with it?
So one thing this does is, which is particularly true for this area, for example, you know, it's one thing to have, you're, you're getting solar energy, right, so to speak, on the grid. But if you want a robust system and you want one with battery backup or other things, like you kind of have, you're not reliant on, you know, the power grid if power fails, like hospitals, right? So it'd be particularly useful for things like, like groups like hospitals to, right, and you'll finance that with other projects maybe as well.
I see.
So there's a number of constituents that if you watch the video they talk about, that would actually be benefited from this, that benefit from this type of program. Again, it's just a matter, you have free acting lenders and free acting groups, but kind of being able to package it together and get to the scale and the figure of risk, it kind of makes the-
And the, and the goal's long term, to do the same thing.
Yeah.
The, which is clean energy.
Right. So you're not forcing anybody to do anything. Yeah.
It just, it just offers options. I wonder how that might be impacted by our, so.
If I've got more information than I do, or if you could-
I don't have any, I could ask for some documentation, I guess. I don't, I think once it gets approved, it'll be easier to kind of see what they have. But, yeah, because I think it was, the administrator was talking about, oh, you can package these projects. They kind of have off the shelf legal and financial documents and investor bringing, you could bring in investors if you wanted to your project and how that, that would work and kind of what the terms would be on exiting. But it wasn't, from, from watching it, you get like a vague, like there's something out there, but I don't know, you don't really get a sense of how, how it works exactly. So, yeah, I guess we would, I could talk to Rebecca Evans at City of Ithaca and see if they have any documentation on that. Given that, I'll mention that you're writing a solar array law and how this would impact that or if there's information to send. Yeah.
If we want to come to a conclusion with that.
Yeah.
Be coming, you know, and there's no reason why they can't submit it to the board trustees and you guys, we're talking how into the law, so you can send it back to the planning board.
When is it gonna come to, to the board trustees?
No, that's a good question. We've been going through some little tweaks here or there and then a subject comes up, so.
Before December 29th or whatever.
They want to have it done by next meeting and the meeting after.
Yes, yes.
I, I don't, I don't see that it would negatively impact the law because we basically say there are limitations to the sizes and so forth, but the implementation of whatever size is approved could go through this.
Yeah. The ownership, there were some questions about ownership and decommissioning and things like that. I didn't have the law in front of me at, at that meeting. It wasn't, it wasn't around, I guess. But those types of things would all impact how the investor structure potentially. So.
We don't want to throw a wrench into your work. I want that work to finish because the work on foreign-
I agree with that 100%. No wrench throwing.
No, no wrench throwing.
Yeah.
But if more information is good information.
Should I ask, should I ask Rebecca for information to CCU? Kind of in the sense it would be if it does-
I'm sure it will hurt.
Yeah, I'll do that and I'll see if it, you know.
See, you know, what information that she has.
Right.
What they have in common with what the soil laws can be.
Yeah. And I think if you really want people to go down the rabbit hole, then I think it's the local power. I mean, my sense is she understands it pretty well, but the local power LLC guy is really the kind of the mastermind and kind of how the structure, the CCA plus structure works. So that would probably be where you would end up next. But I think first we'll just go through a backup.
And, and I, I agree with Carolyn that we need to, if we're going to start this process, we'd want to start primarily with CCA. And because we can always tap into the other resources down the road, but getting the CCA for the village and residents and businesses would be primary goal.
So I think we could, you know, basically we're tapped, if we join the plan and goes through, it'd be CCA for the village. And then, you know, rather than kind of say, we want to lock Village of Lansing residents and businesses out of this other option.
No, no, we-
You can, you can do it. I mean, but we're, we're just doing this.
I just wish the conversation was focusing on one thing because it would move faster and be efficiently. But once it's in, it doesn't sound like this is any big deal. It's just another thing that takes conversations.
I think it's the main thing, it's, it's not, because some people might pick up things like this and like, oh, we're getting involved in financing or all this other stuff that it can get, you know, misinterpreted or, or kind of seem like it's, it's a big thing, but really just say, we're just doing this and this is something added.
This is available, but waiting to get all of the information before we pass it on.
Yeah, the sprinkles are there. You can put on that.
I just want to say thank you for watching that video. I'm really glad that you're as interested in CCA as you are because I think that I'm very excited about it.
It shouldn't.
I wish we'd done it five years ago.
Shouldn't take away from anybody.
We've all saved so much money.
Well, there is just so many problems five years ago that-
With administration.
Administration.
It's getting, it's getting easier and we're gonna get in on the right time.
I agree.
But I, yeah.
We're not having to suffer through all the bleeding edge pain.
Yeah. And I think, I think, I think we really have to get a way to explain that other thing in terms of, there are lots of questions came up in the meeting that they really weren't, let's say, crisp answers to.
Right.
So if someone has any, any questions, I think we just kind of need to be in a position of like, look, you can, this is something, if you're interested in a project, you can talk to, you know, that's what we'll-
I, I agree. Until we get enough information where we're comfortable giving at least part of it and saying, oh, here, oh, you got this. Well, let's check this person. And so, so that, but that's all good to know. That's good. Anything else?
I think, oh, there was an interesting talk on the boat. They talked about PFAS and I guess, yeah.
It's not, it's not interesting. It's just depressing.
It is very, it was like one more-
Everywhere. By the way, they give this whole presentation on PFAS and all these like things you can't use. And literally they served us a meal with all the stuff.
With all the food mapping.
All the stuff that was on there and they threw, it was all garbage. They threw everything away. They had these, apparently these wax paper sort of plates are like way worse than like other kinds of-
Yeah, the green.
The fake green stuff is worse than the regular stuff. That was all the stuff we were at the presentation, all three of us. You can't, the bottom line is you can't, you can't get it.
The only takeaway there, and I think one, you know, they, is that my, my father was really concerned about this for a long time because he lives on a lake in Wisconsin. And I was like, I don't know anything about PFAS really over that much. But then the only thing to take away is that the Assembly Member, Calas, is putting legislation to include or increase the, or require the documentation and measurement of PFAS for anytime they kind of discharge water in large bodies. So that's one step to, at least you'll know. But, yeah.
Those, those things are in cosmetics. I mean, they're, they're in absolutely everything.
And the Calas kept saying they're in toilet paper.
They're, it's-
Dental floss.
Dental.
And the, the real issue is if it's there, how do we get it out?
Yeah.
One knows how to get it out.
Well, you can't because they explained it's the flora. Oh, that was you. Good.
Yeah, the water treatment.
The, the bond that it's created by, what is it? Fluoriding? Chlorine, chlorine, flora, flora.
Chlorine, yeah.
It's the strongest one. So you can't break it up. Once you put it together, that's the whole point of it. That's why they put it together because it's so strong.
What's sad is at some point someone's gonna say, you have to, you have to take it out. And, and, okay, we can't, we don't know how. It's not our problem. You just have to do it. So.
Oh, you change your habits, right? Going forward.
Yeah, well.
It's as simple as that. You know, as long as, just a story.
Yep.
Lake Placid. I was walking around between Murray Lake and Lake Placid. I see, I see a truck. New York State Department of Environmental Conservancy. The guy sits in there for half an hour, running engine, gets out of the truck, the engine's still running, and he writes up people and nameplate or license plates of boat trailers. As long as they do that, I have my issues, honestly.
Yeah.
Honestly.
Yeah. But I, yeah, I don't know that water filtration, someone said it can do, I don't know yet.
But, but how many times have you-
They mentioned Denmark produced the PFAS and the McDonald's wrapper. I think that was the most positive news.
Yeah. Well, you cannot put it in, but you were saying get it out. We don't know how to get it out. We do know how to not put it in.
Exactly.
It will change the, the composition of the products.
Every infection.
Which is what we have to do through legislation like they had in Denmark where it was successful.
Yeah.
It's, exactly.
But you can't, you can't take it out. You cannot put it in.
Well.
It's changed the habit.
Right.
We have, we have at least a partial discussion, almost every vote about that.
About that issue. Very simple.
You know, we don't know, and there's, we're struggling with, we don't know what to do. Yes, this is-
Is it just expensive to take it out? Or is there knowable technology or not even, it's not even know?
They don't know how to take it out.
And so I wonder-
And once you know how, how expensive is it?
Right.
And how effective is it?
Right.
And they just, they said it's, it's a problem, but it's a problem on a global scale.
Right.
And when someone solves it, we'll go for it. But we, as Bolton Point, cannot solve this problem.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, it's like with the village, we know what all of the star in the, in the world can only solve our little-
Bolton Point thing is interesting though.
Bolton, kind of. Anyway, so. Anyway, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Good, but depressing report.
Yeah, it was.
Thank you very much, Drew. My day's made. Okay. This is gonna be a longish meeting. Let's see, I, let's see. I, we've already done this. So Drew and Susan are going to be gone Monday night. Do we want, do Wolfgang, Carolyn and I, do we want to have a meeting Monday night to discuss nothing at all? Or do we want to make this a long meeting and get everything done today?
I'd be happy to talk today if that's okay with everybody.
Wolfgang, how do you feel?
Okay. It's my wife's birthday, but it's okay.
Are you expecting you right now?
No.
We won't talk that long.
As long as I can cook tonight, it's okay.
So we're gonna can, cancel Monday meeting?
We have to pass a resolution canceling Monday night's meeting, Monday, the 18th.
I'll move second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yes, canceled. So now we need to look, we need to approve, since we're not going to meet Monday night, we have to approve the August 17 draft minutes that Jody provided to us in our package for today at the very beginning. Does, did everything look okay to someone? Well, first of all, I will move that we, we review and pass the draft Village of Lansing minutes from August 17th, 2023. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Did anyone see any problems with minutes that, that Jody had sent out? Any problem, issues that you think, okay. So any other discussion? All those in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, you weren't there? Okay. Carolyn, I've got to make notes for Jody, just in case. Okay, yes. Okay. And we've canceled this. I moved. Who seconded that one? Sorry. Wolfgang. Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we approved that too. Okay, so let's take care of our vouchers. Did everyone get a chance to look through all of the vouchers?
Yeah, I looked through them. The only comment I had was, how, do we clean the windows annually or is that just once, as needed?
I think it's annual. It may be semi-annual.
Yep.
But I, I, I know it's a scheduled event.
And then the one expense that I noticed was like, the kind of thing that I worry about is like the small slash big, you know, they're, they're small so they don't get too much attention. But like to stripe the Nataki Park was 800 bucks. That seems like, I mean, how many lines of paint is that? That seemed like a lot of, but, I mean, once you hire some, you don't take bits or something like that, you know, you just get an estimate. Is that a reasonable amount of money for that?
I couldn't say.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, I know it's permanent striping. It's the kind that-
I don't remember ever looking at it.
It's not the one year paint.
I mean, bill before.
It's not, it's not the water based paint. It's actually the paint that's embedded with glass so that it lasts five, six years. I think that's probably-
Most of the cost is in the actual paint.
It's the paint, it's the people coming out with the, the equipment and the ability to do that and get it in. I think that's probably a, a reasonable cost at today's prices.
Fine.
Okay?
I'm convinced.
Three years ago.
You guys didn't get the red.
You didn't see these?
I didn't.
Oh, okay.
I didn't. I thought I was asked. I'm so sorry.
So we'll give you a few more, a few minutes to look. Get back to it, okay?
I'll give it to Wolfgang. He does it faster first.
So you both have got, okay. We, we can go on. We'll do that at the end. Just don't let me forget. Jody will, you won't have a mayor when Jody gets back. Don't do it. Oh, you'll have a mayor, but it won't be me.
Are you the deputy mayor? I think, or Carolyn, I think. Yeah.
So Carolyn's got some skin in the game too. So we'll, we'll wait for that. The other topic we have is the, the reserve expenditure authorization. This is basically, we have to pass a resolution to move money out of our capital reserve fund for our water capital plants. And so we're basically moving money out to pay for the work that we've been doing this summer. So did everyone get a chance to look at that? Do you have any questions? Okay, I will move that we pass the resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I have some questions regarding the budget in general, but I would wait until Jody comes back.
Okay, yeah.
Makes probably a lot more sense to discuss when Jody's here.
She's more, much more knowledgeable. I mean, we can give you what we think, but she would know for certain.
It's, it's not pressing. It's just, it needs to be discussed.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion on removing the capital reserve funds? Transfer them?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So then I've got, we did this, this, okay, the, the retail marketing study, this, this came to me this week and, and actually last week and I read through it and I poured it onto you. I just wanted to get your feelings on, should we expend $7,400, $7,500 on a retail marketing study for the village, buying into the overall, looks like a, the countywide type retail study? We just wanted your input.
I feel like if we learn something, it doesn't help us because we don't get to I feel like if we learn something, it doesn't help us because we don't get to pick who wants to start a business in the village. I mean, we get to choose who is, is doing business here, then awesome.
Right.
That'd be great, but it hasn't worked that way yet.
No, it hasn't.
So.
No, I agree with Carolyn and any developer that already knows more than we do in terms of market analysis. So I see no reason to spend.
We know what we want, but we don't get to pick. Then, yeah, we all know we want a walkable village, you know, with layered businesses with, you know, retail and, and offices and then residential, but we don't get to pick them.
Yeah. The thing, the thing that really wasn't terribly clear in the proposal was, once you've got this information, how do you use it?
Well, that's.
They mentioned it's not gonna be on, on the CD issue.
Yeah.
That's my point.
Yeah.
We don't have the ability to go out and, and knock on doors of businesses and say, we'd like to move to the village.
Those Cornell kids come and like, they're like, this is what the mall should be. And we're like, that's great, I, I would also like an ice cream, right?
It looks good.
But isn't it redundant, I mean, is other, I mean, they're tourism, everybody's doing their own, they're promoting their.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wolfgang?
At a county level.
Drew? Oh, sorry.
I, I completely agree.
Okay, all right.
And, you know, after you get the PowerPoint, I can tell you, you get a $25,000 study to connect you with some retailers and whatever, facilitate it, and that's an ongoing, and, you know, honestly speaking, if we would do a walkthrough through the village with all the storefronts and everything, and put our heads together afterwards and do a conclusion, we would be much better off.
Probably so.
Yeah, I thought I was the one negative on consultants, but. Yeah.
I'm a consultant, so.
So, yeah, yeah, they've mentioned a couple times, sit on the shelf, but I was trying to envision that. The phase one, the national trends, I was like, I don't need that, I wouldn't need that. That's the project I don't need. And the things they mentioned sound great, but we wanna make sure it's integrated with walkability and everything else and kind of desire. I do think, and it seems that the mall owners are, would benefit the most, and I don't, you know, I'm not sure they're gonna how they could chip in, but I think it actually, if we had talked to the mall owners or, I have, when I invested in the past, I did real, was in real estate also, even just, interesting, I don't know how to go about it, we could talk about that, maybe bringing in some people who are involved with REITs that often have.
Sorry, what's that?
REITs, real estate investment funds, that often are retail and they have a game plan. I mean, I think there is interesting here, you get like a, you know, relatively well-off catchment, the population is growing in the area, you got, you know, students and so forth, it could, it could, it could be a, at least a stable cash flow. But if they, they have the game plan and, and, but I don't know. I, I don't know if that's something, I, I could ask a few people, but that's, I think that's all I can do, you know, as far as that goes.
That's, my feeling is the same as yours. It looks, you know, I always think about, what, once we've got the final report and it's all rosy and, and it looks great, how do we implement that?
Yeah, they said it wasn't, but, but they said give an action plan, but it wasn't really how, what, yeah.
The action, the action plan is like.
The owner of the mall.
It's like, I always use this as an example, it's, you know, did you ever hear Steve Martin's How to Make a Million Dollars and Not Pay Taxes?
I think, yeah.
First?
Right.
Step one?
Right.
Make a million dollars. Step two, don't pay taxes. Three, when they catch you, say, I forgot. You know, that's an action plan.
Right, right.
Doesn't work. So I, I feel the same way, but I wanted to, you know, if, if, this brings up a, a good discussion for, for the future is, is if, if any of you have ideas about how we might go about attracting businesses, I'm open for that. But we, the, the real problem, and, and this is a problem that, and I'm, I'm passing on information that I get from hearing the counties' discussions on this topic from, from Deborah, is that we are centrally isolated. It's perfect for what we are, but getting a large business to move into this community is very hard. It's hard to get materials, products to Ithaca.
Yep, exactly.
There's, there's no major highway. We have an airport, but my, a lot of people aren't using airlines to transport materials unless they're from overseas. And it's, it's, it's a very difficult problem. And it's, that's why it's very exciting when we do have businesses come into this area because they're taking a chance. So just in the back of your minds, if, if you think of anything or hear of anything interesting, bring it up, pass it along, and let's, let's continue to consider.
Microtel, I guess they're called, is that the new company?
No, Microminlo.
Microminlo just came, one of my friends just hopped over there. I can ask her to ask them why they picked here, and then maybe we can learn something about from their perspective, what was attractive, and maybe we can double down on.
I, I can tell you.
Oh, you already know the answer?
I know some of it.
Okay.
Albany is investing a lot of money in the Syracuse area for a, a microchip technology campus, let's call it. Minlo Micro did not want to go into Syracuse, they wanted to be in the general area, and our IDA team, our Ithaca Area Economic Development Agency, worked with them through whatever means they have to attract them to here because we already have a technology campus with facilities that were pretty close to what they needed for microchip, in their case, microswitch development. And we have the airport here, they do have to fly in some materials so they can fly direct anywhere into this airport through a customs facility and have it here. I have, I have a meeting with them this next week, Deborah and I are gonna go talk with.
Who's them?
My, the Minlo Micro people who are here building their facility. I, I, there was a question asked at Bolton, our Bolton Point meeting, what are their water usage requirements? Can we meet those? Some, two of the people in that meeting had concerns that Minlo Micro would use super powerful lasers to create these switches, and those lasers, judging by, I think, some facilities in California, use something like two or three millions gallons of water per day to keep the laser cool. That's not what Minlo Micro will be doing. So when I posed this question, they said, why don't you come look at our facility? We're not finished yet, but we can give you a tour through what we have, and we can show you, as far as we are, as far as we can tell, we won't need any more water than was used by.
Kionics.
Kionics. So we're gonna meet with them and talk about, so, but I'll ask, you know, what, you know, what really attracted you? I'll see if I can get more information.
Yeah. And it sounds like Ithaca Area's development's a big part of it.
Yeah.
Really giving them the support that they need.
Yeah. The, the thing that concerns me is Ithaca Area doesn't, not necessarily include Village of Lansing, the name. But what this transaction tells me is that they're actually looking at for the county, it's just that that's their name. So Heather McDaniel did a lot of work, she and her team, to attract this company here, and so, anyway.
And then there's also Aldi came up, and I think that it bodes well for what's happening in our retail sector. I mean, that generates a lot of traffic.
I think, I think, you know, playbook I was talking about is often they're mixed use, kind of have, that way you have body heat. And if you get, a lot of student housing actually is another, you can.
Yeah, with the uptick in development.
Yeah, you could do, if there's a transport that takes people to Ithaca College, or you could actually, it could be workable, but I don't know, I mean, I, I'm not sure. But I did, some of the playbooks haven't used, so I could try to find out if someone might be interested, but.
Well, you know, the ideas that we come up with here, we can pass, walk to the, the I A D E A, I A E D A, and say, can you help us with this? This is an idea, you thought about this, and they could say, yeah, we've tried, tried that, didn't really work, or, oh, that's a good idea.
Once you get the body heat of people living there, then the businesses are kind of.
Yeah, attract businesses, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, okay, so we, we'll, I'll just say that we decline on this one.
Yep.
Okay. And I'll send them the letter. And I appreciate them sending us that and giving us the opportunity to discuss it, but we just don't think it's right for us.
Ronnie, along these lines.
I'm sorry?
Along these lines, we saw a lot of change, or we'll see a lot of change in the village going forward. Oak Warner is on sale right now, they're moving out. However, I saw they bring a new product in 2024. I assume it's in the chain plant, not in the other one.
Mm-hmm.
Historically, it would have been in the other one. Transact's moving out, some other companies are moving out, Kionics left for known reasons. Now we have Microminlo coming in. Is there a benefit in us getting together and look at the comprehensive plan? And look whether the assumptions are still valid, or whether we should change something?
Because we had talked about it, haven't we?
Yeah, it's about time to go back through the comprehensive plan anyway. It's about five, I think it's, no, it's, I think it's seven or eight.
It's, it's, yeah, last update was, you know, you, you see a lot of airlines left. Basically, if you want to fly out west, you have to go either to Syracuse or to Almira.
So unreliable flying from here. I've had flights canceled and then everything gets messed up then, so I don't even bother, yeah.
I, I had some good experiences with the Ithaca airport, so I was flying at the Ithaca airport and just lately over to the UK.
I have not.
If you, if you want to go east, it's actually not too bad. If you want to go west, it's a nightmare. So we saw a lot of changes, so, yeah.
I like the idea of reviewing the comprehensive plan with a specific interest in technology and business development because actually that's not a topic that we talk about very often. Mostly we talk about residential and sidewalks and walkability, but this is very important to the health of the village.
That's a strength of this area.
Totally.
So I worked as a computer programmer for Epic Systems, you know, you go to the doctor.
Okay, you're a real estate computer programmer? I'm trying to get energy and try to figure out.
Yeah, no, I don't know what I'm doing. But Epic, this was like in the 90s, and so they, they would peel off, now every doctor's office, you're in there, the software, they would peel off people who were in a PhD program or went to the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and they put their building, they, they put their headquarters in an old school, just in a suburb. So you kind of see a model like that, you have educated workforce, you have educated people here, they may want, some want to stay here, you know, even PhDs or people who drop out of the PhD program, all this, you get some intellectual capital. May be an attractive place.
Well, that's what Kionics was.
And technology.
Kionics was a PhD from.
So, you know, the, the biggest problem here was financing.
Yeah.
Getting the funds. And just talked to Galvin, I know him quite well, and he had issues getting Kionics funded, by the way. I had the same issue, I was sitting in.
Banks in this area?
Oh, from VC, it's basically all venture capital or private equity. And get these guys in here, it's a nightmare. I had the same issue, I was sitting in Southern California and had all the investors sitting up in Menlo Park. Tonight, they just don't want to come, board meetings, things like that, they just don't want to drive four hours.
That's true.
And that's the issue we are having here, and I know that Galvin had the same issue. So.
Where'd he go? Where'd he go?
Who?
Galvin, where'd he go?
He is still here.
Ooh, something.
He, he's running Kionics right now.
Where'd Kionics go?
Kionics was sold to Rom.
Sorry?
Rom, Japanese company.
Oh, okay.
It's a Japanese company, they, they sold Kionics to Rom, and Rom basically pulled everything out. There are probably, I don't know how many people are left. One of them is the, the president, CEO, Sky used to report to me, so, but.
Did you talk to anybody in Silicon Alley, or that even the business school has a fund? I don't know how big it is, but yeah, I don't know.
That, there is a Kiyoga venture fund, it's Saxon and from Cornell. And, but they had invested in Kionics, they have some other investments going on. But the big investments you need, so if, if you need, let's say, to the tune of 50 million to build a production or something like that, it's basically not available.
Even in New York City?
Well, you can go to New York City, you can go to Boston, you can go to Silicon Valley, Austin is a, a little bit in Chicago, but that's pretty much it.
That's why they're, Albany is investing the money in the Syracuse area to try and build a corridor of technology here.
They'd ride, they'd ride the same down in being able to miss batteries.
So we'll just hang on. Hopefully the, with Minlo Micro coming in, and if they're successful, perhaps that will attract some other outlying supporters for the technology corridor too, so. That's what I'm hoping anyway. So, moving on. The CEC CSC Task Force, we submitted our solar energy campaign documents from, that Simon Mall had put together for us from last, last year, 2022. And we submitted those about 10 days ago, they were approved. So sometime in the next couple of weeks, we're going to receive a notice of a non-competitive $5,000 grant. And our only responsibility to receive that $5,000 is that we have to come up with a letter of commitment that says basically, we thank them for the money, how would we plan to use it? So we don't have to decide today, but if, if you think about it, and within our next meeting or two, what sort of plans would we have for the $5,000 related to clean energy? You know, something like installing.
Changing LED bulbs.
Well, we've got LED light bulbs.
Streets, on the streets.
Well, we've already done that too.
They're all done.
Yeah, they're all done, but we could install.
That's the low hanging.
Charging stations, anything that might have to do with making clean energy available, or would use it for a.
Charging station in the mall. You actually end up there often when you're driving a Tesla, you know, where you end up.
Has to be on our property.
I see, okay, yeah.
Nice try, Drew.
Yeah, I was trying to, I was trying to like get a synergy there, but.
We could use it for a campaign, a public, a PR campaign for people to, to get them more involved in clean energy programs, et cetera. So be thinking about that. We'll come up with something. We help, we'll have some help with the Cornell Cooperative Extension people to make the wording properly. And once we do that, then within probably a month or six weeks, we would get the $5,000 grant.
Could we make that $5,000 grant available as a grant? Could we create a grant? I'm trying to think of like, I don't want to wait, I don't want to spend it on a campaign, that seems like. But what if it was a, what if it was an offer? Like every person who puts in solar panels gets $100 from the village or something until the $5,000 is gone, so first, first people get $100. It's not much, but it's something.
We can talk that over with CE, the CCE guys and say, has something like that been done before? You know, it basically, it would be like an award, a stipend or whatever, yeah, for, for every installation, you know, we would chip in. We, if we did 500, we could do 10 more installations within the village, or if we did 250, we could do 20. So, yeah, so we could do some, I could check in, something like that. That's the kind of ideas we need, you know, this is what we would like to do. And unless they, unless the CCE guys, and they're the direct liaison into the Clean Energy Communities Program, unless they say, that's probably not gonna go.
I would, I kind of just want, would like to try to use it practically, like if there's, the next time we buy a truck, we were able to buy an electric truck or something because it was $5,000 more, but it would have to be so perfect. The numbers would have to be so perfect to match up.
Right. Yeah, we'd have to, or even if you just put solar panels, $5,000.
I was thinking, could we put in one solar panel?
For our own use or.
Yeah.
I mean, that.
Yeah.
But the system, the problem is the system costs.
Yeah, well, we'll see, yeah, because I, yeah, we can discuss.
Just, you know, put some ideas together, we'll, we'll put something together and get the letter out. We'll get the $5,000 and then we'll figure out how to use it. If we change our plans, I think that that's okay too. We'll just let them know that, you know, after reflection, that this is really what we decided to do. But we, we'll have plenty of time. We have to do it within three months of, of receiving the notification of the grant application, so we've got time to work on it. Two other things, at our, at our next meeting in October, our first meeting, October 2nd meeting, we need to talk, when Jody's here, about scheduling our Friends of the Park recognition.
What's the date of that? On my phone?
We, October 2nd is the meeting. We haven't set the date for the recognition.
It's on a Monday?
Yeah, that's our trustees meeting.
Oh, sorry, when's the?
Oh, we haven't decided on the date yet. We have to wait for Jody to get back so that we can set up a good date. It'll be at Ned Hickey Park, so let's plan to do that at the first meeting in October and try to do it before winter sets in. Otherwise, it's gonna be a chilly event.
Maybe tomorrow.
And then finally, just a reminder to be sure and write your articles and send them in to Jody before October 25th. She's gonna try to mail those out on the 29th. Any articles you can write. So I've got an outline of things I want to write, I just haven't started yet, so, but she needs those from us. Okay, last thing. Everyone had a chance to look at the vouchers? Any, any new questions?
Yeah.
Not, okay. I will move that we approve to those vouchers and pairings. Drew seconds?
Yeah.
I've got to, I've got to figure out where that is in here. Oh, here it is, okay. Yeah, I moved. Drew readal, seconded. All those in favor of paying bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
What was Wolfgang's topic that he wanted to bring up today?
Oh, when Jody's back or something, but he wants something about the budget.
But there was one earlier that you said, when he went around the room and says, anyone have something?
I, that was the marketing study.
Oh, the marketing.
Or the, the retail study.
Oh, okay, marketing study.
That was the retail study.
So, yeah, Eddie, when Jody's back, we'll get, we could give you a partial answer, or we could say, uh huh. And she will be back. Let's see, I've got a note here. She'll be back for the October 2nd meeting, I'm sure. Okay, thank you. Oh, she's gonna be gone.
Be gone from the first meeting, won't she?
Yeah, she'll be gone from the first meeting. Send your question to Jody and copy us and get an answer.
It's not that important.
Well, but it might be. Can't say it's not important until we know where it is, Wolfgang.
Just need to understand the budget process.
Oh, well, budget process.
That, that's, that's all I need to understand.
On the question, what is life? Now, we'll, we'll, when we get closer to the budgets, hopefully, you'll have plenty of opportunities to ask questions, for sure. That starts normally in February, but if you wanna get an early start, that's fine, too. But we won't really start that until February, so.
You know, looking at numbers, I just have to understand the background of the numbers, that's all. Otherwise, I can't judge the numbers, to simply ask that, you know?
I, I did ask Jody a couple of questions, I think, on the budget she sent out recently that you're speaking of, and should I forward those to the, her answers to the group, or?
That could give them a start.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just forward those, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It won't, and, but no, we will have opportunities before February. So when Jody's back from both of her vacations or both of her trips, start asking questions, and she'll put together something for us. And you'll get answers, and you'll get, you'll get more answers that during the process, too. So you can all, if you're in the process and you have a question while you're looking through the numbers, and you have a question, you can raise it at any time. I will move that we adjourn. Second. Drew seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.